Sorry to be late. I'm gonna call this meeting order. Nikki, please call the roll.
Nikki Austin, present. Jim Curran.
Present.
Mike Davis.
Present.
Mike Brussett.
Present.
Nicole Josephs. Teresa Keen.
Present.
Steve Meyer. Terry Montgomery.
Present.
And Phil Basper.
Okay, we have a forum where officially in session for the ten thirteen regular Board of Education meeting. I've got an amendment to the agenda. We've got a new section G. Essentially, we just pulled the summary of the superintendent profile focus groups out of boardmanship and into new business. So I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda. What's described?
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. So we got our agenda set unless there's anybody else who wants to propose a different amendment. I would look, I would entertain a motion to approve our amended agenda for tonight.
So.
Second.
Terry.
Motion by Terry, second by Mike Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right.
Nailed it.
Nailed it.
Okay, so now we've got the... I've got the phone bar. So we're here tonight for our first Excellence Awards for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. So thank you, everybody, who made the time to show up. And of course, thank you for all the teachers who are playing their parts in this and all the students and families who produced the beautiful and courageous acts of leadership that have merited the awards being celebrated here tonight. So I think first up, unless there's anything you want to say first, we will turn it over to Abraham Lincoln, Ms. Judd.
How's it going, Berkeley? All right, I'm gonna put you at ease. No matter what Mr. Neimeyer says, you do not have to speak tonight, okay? He tried that right before she left for the day and we told, I told her that wasn't nice. But we are here to celebrate Berkeley Reese. She's a fifth grader at Abraham Lincoln Elementary School. And there's so many amazing things about Berkeley, but one of the things that stands out to me is just how kind and compassionate you are towards your peers. You can count on Berkeley to always be doing the right thing and to lead by example. So Mr. Neimeyer is gonna tell us a little bit about why he chose Berkeley.
Yeah, that was kind of a inside joke because Berkeley is kind of on the quieter side and so I thought I came up to her, really tried to keep my face as serious as I could. I just very matter of fact like, hey, just heads up, I forgot to tell you. They've gotta give like a two to three minute speech with the kids. And I just saw her face go blank.
And it kept going.
And I kept going and Mrs. Judd ruined my fun. But that is one thing that, you know, Berkeley does a great job of leading in by showing actions and being a great example. And it's one of those things where I've always been a very loud and like expressive person and I really come to admire the people that are on the quieter side but also have an effect without that loudness and excitement. And I've really come to like Berkeley in just the first month and a half that we've gotten to know each other and I've always had heard really great things. And I've really also liked to see her come out of her shell a little bit more during class and raise her hand a little bit more because I understand how hard that is for a kiddo that is on the quieter side to do that. But I'm gonna be done talking because I had your classmates write some things about you because I'm usually really bad at this. I wanted to push it off and he goes, oh, and that's why the door was locked when you came back from doing notes, you came back too fast.
Did you lock her out?
So...
He wears all his secrets, isn't he?
So I had to get you out of the room for a little bit, so I asked you to help the office pass out notes and you had no idea what that was. And I just said, go with Paige, she'll tell you what to do. And they're walking around the school and they came back too fast. I had my door closed and I see them at the door and I'm like, just wait out there. And next thing you know, I go back to open the door and they're gone. And I kind of peeked my head out. And then they were walking down to like the third grade hallway, so I don't know if you were gonna go back and visit some old teachers if you had some free time, but yeah, so sorry about that. I know that was really confusing and weird, but it was worth it because I got some really good stuff. As usual, the nice, Berkeley's nice, she's funny. I think the thing that stuck out to me the most was I kind of said, write some nice things or a story or a joke you might have or something that you have with Berkeley. And we got some generic stuff and then we got some cool stuff that I'm gonna share. You know, kiddo said, you know, Berkeley is the best hugger, she always picks me up when I fall down and she is just the perfect person. And some more good friend stuff. I also, apparently you commented on someone's bracelet that it looked like Sid the Sloth and they remembered that from who knows when. But funny, sweet, and there was, I love that about you also, N-U-T-T-A. What does that spell? Peanut butter? Like, I don't know what that is, but what I'm trying to get across here in a very odd circular way is that you have all these connections with these kids, these inside jokes, these stories that you've had an effect on these kids that like in the, I think it was like five minutes that you were gone and I put them on the spot because I didn't warn them it was coming. I'm just like, write these things down. These kids had those banked up and that just shows the impact you have on your classmates. So that's so cool. So I'm very proud of you.
Berkeley, I'm Nicole with the school board. I just wanted to present you with a certificate of achievement and a Barnes and Noble gift card. And thank you just for being an amazing all-around person that leads with quiet leadership and cares about everyone around you. Congratulations.
Thanks to the A team. Our student from Northside is gonna be back next month. Wasn't able to make it tonight, so we'll be excited to celebrate her next month. Next, we'll go with Parkside.
How's it going, Maggie? All right, everybody. I am incredibly excited to celebrate Maggie tonight. Maggie is a fifth grader at Parkside and her story at Parkside began just last year. So prior to about middle of fourth grade last year, Maggie was doing homeschool and came to Parkside for her first tour and I'll never forget giving them a tour and saying, do you have any questions? What do you need to know? And one of Maggie's first very legitimate questions is so like when you have to go to the bathroom, you like tell someone, you raise your hand, what do you do? Because she was so used to it being a little bit of her schedule and a little bit flexible. But from the first day of fourth grade until now, Maggie has not missed a beat and is already contributing at such a high level to our school. And I am so proud of you and all of your hard work and I know that you will have an amazing end to your time at Parkside. Maggie was our first fire truck ride for the school year. And the story always goes like the parents have to tell a lie, they have to come up with something. We've had a lot of fake dentist appointments, lots of flu shots, but Maggie's mom, because Maggie was pretty upset and this speaks to the leader that she was, she was gonna have to miss breakfast duty on safety patrol that morning. And so mom's like, what am I gonna say? I'm gonna lie to her. Like, she's really upset, she's gotta miss safety patrol, like this can't get any worse. Mom made it worse by telling the whole family they were getting tested for whooping cough. And until the fire truck came, so here she's feeling bad about lying and she gave you a really good one. So Maggie is also sporting a shirt from the fire department. So a special shout out to Monroe Fire Department. The fire chief showed up at Parkside. It was like the second week of school, which is usually like an appropriate time for the fire chief to show up. And I get the text that says, we need you in the office, the fire chief's here. And that's every principal's like, ooh, like I hope there's not too much stuff on the wall and I hope there's not too many boxes on the high shelves and like I am not ready to get the fire inspection out today. But it was Chief Ruffer with a big giant box and he said, we actually wanna make Student of the Month a little bit more special. Here's some great shirts so your students know that we are really proud of their great work. So Maggie's the first one sporting a new shirt from the fire department. So Ms. Lightsinger is also new to Parkside this year and she didn't waste any time getting a nomination in for a Student of the Month because she recognized something really special in Maggie. So will you tell everyone, Ms. Lightsinger, what impressed you in the very first months with Maggie?
Sure, I can't think on my feet, so I did write something on my phone. So I nominated Maggie for Student of the Month for her work ethic, leadership, and eagerness to learn more every day. Maggie demonstrates all of these qualities in every class she is in. She is humble, kind, and helpful. She is always the first one with her hand in the air to answer questions, share her thoughts, but she is also seen encouraging her peers to answer and voice their thoughts as well. Maggie helps others to solve problems and helps them think through steps and offers advice when needed. Maggie always has a smile on her face and cannot wait to see what the day brings her. Her love for learning knows no end and she will continue to do amazing things as the days, months, and years go on. And I'm very proud of you, Maggie.
Hi Maggie, I'm Phil with the school board. How are you?
Good.
Nobody's got whooping cough.
She was like, do they even test for whooping cough?
Hi, you don't know. Hey, you're a teacher and principals said great things about you. Leadership, eagerness to learn, and those are all great qualities. Keep up the great work. To commemorate tonight, we have a certificate for you and also a gift card to Barnes and Noble to get a book of your choice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats, Maggie. This is up the middle school.
All right, our Monroe Middle School winner of the month is Tony Williams. He may look familiar because he is a seasoned vet up here, am I right? He won as a fifth grader, but we don't hold that against any of our middle schoolers because we are shooting for those cheesy expectations at all grade levels. And it's actually quite an honor to be able to be chosen as a sixth grade boy within the first month of school and you haven't been acclimated to our building and the way we do things. I mean, it's a little bit different than elementary, huh? So to rise above even the seventh and eighth grade nominations is a resounding viewpoint of who you are as a kid and a leader in our building. So must appreciate it. We're glad you're here with us and Ms. McCormick's got some amazing things to say.
So Tony is in my homeroom as well as in my English class, so I get to see Tony in both sides, both settings, you know, the fun and also the true academic side. So Tony consistently demonstrates exceptional academic achievement through dedication, curiosity, and a strong work ethic. He is a natural leader who encourages others and takes initiative in group projects. Tony's positive attitude and respect for others sets a powerful example for good citizenship within the school community, making the classroom and school a better place for everyone. Tony's inquisitive mind is always appreciated in the classroom and thinking ahead to what information he needs for success. Through hard work and integrity, Tony embodies the values that make our school a place of excellence and belonging. I am so proud to nominate Tony for this award.
Hi, Tony. I'm Steve from the school board. Are you a little nervous?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, don't feel bad, I am too. This is my first time doing it. It's really nice to hear the nice comments that these people said about you, especially being a good citizen. Being a good citizen at your age, there's only gonna be positive things the rest of your life. You'll be able to do anything you wanna do. So the board would like to give you a certificate and a gift card to Barnes and Noble for your choice. Congratulations.
Last but not least, high school.
All right. Monroe High School Student of the Month is senior Marcus Ott. Marcus was nominated by Mrs. Davis and then when we put out that Marcus was the Student of the Month, I kinda asked for some information beyond what Miss Davis said and I had all kinds of people saying, oh, man, great choice, great choice, great kid. But I have to apologize, the one thing I should've done from Mr. Neimeyer is I should've had your friends write things about you.
That would've been a mistake.
Yeah. I'm sure they were not great. They would've been great. But I'm not gonna seal or thunder. I'll let you talk about all the things that you have and what you got from people and then I'll fill out the address.
Thank you. So one of the good things is I could write this out ahead of time and blow up the font because one thing Marcus will say is I've always got my readers on my head like someone else. So that was a good thing is that I was able to do that ahead of time. And I did wanna have it written because like Mr. Jackson said, there's a lot of good stuff out there about Marcus and I didn't wanna misquote anyone. Marcus Ott has grown many, in many ways, over his years at MHS. He's grown into a young adult that is optimistic, driven, and extremely goal-oriented. Marcus participated in the launch program last year and Mr. Bordner shared that he was a great leader and connected to his classmates and mentors from our community. He has a lot of school pride to share. And then I wanna add, when we got in here tonight, Marcus said, oh, I've been in here from launch. So that was really cool for him to make that connection. So that was a pretty neat connection. Mr. Strons, who's also here tonight, okay? He commented back and said that Marcus is one of, he was one of his teachers previously and shared that in every class and activity he's a part of, he excels. He has an outstanding attitude and is an excellent role model. Even though he does not have a class with me right now, he still brightens my day when I see him. Marcus also is a current youth apprentice in the area of finance and banking and he's working hard to build a strong path for his future, which is one of the main reasons him and I talk is because we helped in getting that set up and helping him get connected to that great opportunity in our community. In addition to his academics, Marcus also participates in basketball and baseball. Mr. Bassett shared the following. Marcus has been a captain for basketball team for the past two seasons. He is reliable and is a leader on and off the court. He shows up at six AM for the six forty zero hour basketball, so that and zero hour strength and conditioning, so that's great. He holds himself and his teammates accountable. And then when he got here, Marcus said to me tonight, he's missing open gym for basketball. So it all comes together, right? So that's great. And while participating in all those programs and in his daily life at Monroe High School, he chooses to constantly wear a smile and does the right thing even when he thinks no one is watching. I've experienced the little things that he does every day to make others feel accepted and cared for. Marcus has a very bright future ahead of him and I know he will make a positive impact on many people along the way.
I do wanna say a couple other things, though. I mean, you hit the nail on the head, he's just a really good person. So one, some examples of this are obviously our football season, Mr. Wilson and I stand out on the track and kinda keep track of our student section. Marcus helps lead that. And you're the first guy, when someone's saying something that's probably shouldn't be said, you'll turn around and address them. And then after the game, when they're getting rowdy and they're having fun, like they are, we want them to have fun, right? He's also the first person to go underneath the bleachers and pick up after themselves because the custodians shouldn't have to do it. I mean, that's just the kinda young man he is. Thank you.
You get me. I'm so excited to give this to you. It's been a privilege and honor to watch you grow up and to watch you be a teammate and a leader and a friend. And so I know you're going great places. I know you're destined to do great things and I know you're gonna excel wherever you go. So I'm excited to give you this certificate.
Thank you so much.
And this gift card. Congratulations.
All right, I will stay up here because I have the pleasure of announcing our this month's staff Excellence Award winner, which is Mr. Ryan Strons, English teacher at Monroe High School. So I know Ryan doesn't love this stuff at all, but I really can't say enough about Ryan. When Ryan first came to Monroe, I think one of the first things we started talking about or actually you started talking about more was, hey, I used to teach this career communications class, right? Bangor? Is it called Bangor?
Bangor.
Bangor?
That's how they say it up there, Bangor.
Bangor. And talked to me about it and we were figuring out what you supported it and we did as an elective first and then all of a sudden now it is part of our required coursework for all high school students. And for those that don't know what that is, that's where Ryan works with these kids on the soft skills and he has them develop resumes and letters of interest and he really on them to get it right. And then not only that, he's got connections with the whole community now and getting people coming in so the kids can mock interview with business leaders all over our community. And those people consistently say, that's one of the best things that you guys do. So thank you for pushing me to do that and for doing that for all of our kids because that's one of the best things that happens to them in high school. But not only that, Ryan really, there's been some things, right? And teaching is really hard and we've made some changes over the years and Ryan hasn't always, I would say, loved all of those changes like most teachers either, but I would say Ryan leans into it and tries to figure it out. He looks at it from a very logical perspective. And then you also, like you're, one of your biggest strengths is your relations with kids. I think, I think kids love you. I think you love them and you want what's best for them, which also creates a little dichotomy of frustration sometimes when they're not doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. But you meet with them, you talk with them, you try to get on their level, you try to communicate with them as much as possible. So that is another huge thing that you do. And then beyond all that, he takes on our, we have a securely program, which used to be Ed Fishes, who which runs our flex program at the high school, like where kids go to get support and help. And that has been a bear, to say the least. Because we had, we thought we had everything figured out in Ed Fishes and then all of a sudden this big company bought Ed Fishes and said, we're gonna make it great. Well, they didn't make it great. They made it almost not workable. They gave us the old version back, but Ryan through this whole thing has been leading not only himself but our entire staff through this. And he's been a resource for them to come ask questions and get support. And I know everybody appreciates you for that. So I just wanna thank you for being the person you are and persevering and I'd love that you're getting this award.
Picture.
I'll be really brief. Jeremy mentioned it, this is not my favorite thing in the world, the irony of the fact that I teach that career class and talk to students about how important soft skills are and public speaking is, and I don't love it. And I'm honest with them when I tell them, like, I don't like being the center of attention either, but sometimes you just have to do it. So I'll be really brief. I think I couldn't do the job that I do without the team that I work with, the English department at the high school and our staff in general are just amazing. Susan Anderson, who's not here tonight, I think she was here a little while ago, she had to go to a concert. She's always busy with all these awesome things, but she also just makes everything great at the high school. Our admin team, Josh and Jeremy do everything they can to meet us where we are as staff and just make the work that we do work and are so understanding all the time and helping us do the best work that we can. And then the coolest thing about my job is, and actually the coolest thing about this is being nominated with all these cool young cheesemakers because we have amazing students in our district. I echo everything that was said about Marcus Ott and more and I know that we have so many awesome students in our building and that really makes my job just like so easy and so fun all the time and I'm blessed to get to do it.
And go Brewers.
And go, oh, absolutely. I'm leaving right here and going home, so I'm sorry that you guys have to stay. Absolutely. For sure.
Ryan, I'm gonna keep you for just a couple more minutes, hope you don't, hope you don't miss too many pitches. I just wanna say thank you on behalf of this school board. I remember hearing a couple of board members got to go attend the mock interview and they came back just glowing, I mean, raving about, not just the kinda coordination of the experience, but how strong our high schoolers were and kind of prepared to interface with employers all over the area. So pulling that through to today, I just wanna say thank you for three things. One, I'm hearing this theme of relationships and that, that doesn't just happen. I know that takes a lot of work and a lot of energy in addition to all the other things you're doing. Two, just the power of innovation. You had something you brought from a different district, district I'd never heard of, but that's okay. And you could've just left it there, but you said like, hey, could I bring this and help, you know, make Monroe and Monroe High School a better place? And then third, it just sounds like you're a team player, ready to pitch in wherever you can and just we need more people like you, more teachers like you, so thanks for all you're doing. Appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. That email's incoming.
And a little something from the Monroe Morning Optimists. Just say thanks for all you do.
All right, let's, you wanna get a, let's get a picture of all the winners up in the front here.
And then if we could, before everyone leaves, this'll take one minute. Last week was National School Board Recognition Week and these folks that sit up here at least a couple times a month, if not more, deserve a huge thank you. This is a volunteer position, meaning they don't get paid a dollar to do this work yet. They come in and invest countless hours on behalf of the kids, the schools, the community because they care about making sure that Monroe continues to be great and that shows up in all of you that we celebrated tonight. And it's not often that we just stop and say thank you. And so on behalf of the district, we do have some certificates for you. You'll also see that some of our kids that put together some artwork for you, there's some over on the wall, there's some on the table. And this isn't just, hey, there's a week, so let's put it together. I just wanna say genuinely on behalf of the people that you do so much for, thank you. It makes a difference. We see it not only in our results, but the way in which we feel cared for and supported every single day. So thank you very much. And now you guys can watch the Brewers. If anyone has a score at this point, I would be, okay, thanks. Last but certainly not least, my favorite.
As folks clear out, we're gonna keep rolling. Next up, we've got our consent agenda. Does any forum member wish to remove anything that is currently on their consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to improve the consent agenda. Motion by Nikki, second by Phil. I'll go ahead and read these in for the record. Okay, we've got seven items here of approving the minutes of our September twenty-second meeting. Okay, we've got seven items here of approving the minutes of our September 22nd meeting. Approval of professional staff retirement. Kami Engels, math teacher at Monroe Middle School. Approval of support staff hiring. Sonia Shoemaker, educational assistant at Abe Lincoln. Approval of Monroe High School safety drill, Abe Lincoln safety drill, Parkside safety drill and the acceptance of several donations. It includes school supplies, snacks and classroom cleaning supplies to Abe, Parkside, Northside and St. Victor's, schools by the Green County Law Enforcement Administration Association. Multiple tubs of Beanie Babies donated to Northside, Abe Lincoln and multiple 4K sites across the district by Ann Edwards in memory of Bernie Schultz. Twenty forty pound boxes of welding wire and, and a box of welding gloves to Monroe High School welding courses by the Abby Schmidt Group of Monroe Truck. And non-perishable foods and funds to Parkside Carrying Closet by the Parkside Staff Union Presbyterian Church donation drive and a monetary donation from Bob and Linda Kates. And then $500 to each elementary school for use by the PTO by Campion Charitable Fund. Any questions before we take a vote? Or comments?
I'd just like to comment, Kami Engels, twenty six, twenty six years with the district. That's a lot of years. She changed a lot of lives. Will her service and wish her the best in the future.
Thanks, Steve. All said. Just a note of gratitude to everybody who's contributing whatever they can to support kids and families and teachers in our districts. Much appreciation for the donations of all kinds. With that, we've got a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Consent items are approved. Next up, I don't have anybody sign in for public comment, but does anybody? Nope. Keep moving. Nothing for old business and on to new business. No liaison.
Uh, no student liaison down. I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to share?
Yep. Fantastic. Great. Okay. Next up, we've got, uh, huge news.
Huge?
Huge news. Great news. On, on a, on a night of, uh, baseball, um, mattering a ton to the state of Wisconsin, we got a big announcement. I'll turn it over to Joe and team to film the details.
Sure. So, you know, again, we, we're so fortunate as a, as a district and community to start off these meetings by celebrating significant donations and sponsorship agreements for the new high school. And today is a big one as well. We've talked about the option of exploring, um, the installation of synthetic turf on the infield of both our varsity baseball and varsity softball fields. At a time, uh, that sounded like a nice idea, but didn't seem like that was going to be our reality. Ron and I worked quite a bit to look at a variety of options as well as looking at some very spirited, spirited and invested, uh, community members. And ultimately, um, I'm happy to say we're at a point where that dream has become a reality. And it's thanks, uh, in large part to a donation made by Rick Ruffinock and his family. And Rick has generously offered to provide $400,000 upfront so that we can move that turf project forward right away. We had had some conversation at the board level previously and I think a credit to the board, they made it clear that, um, excited about this idea of turf on baseball and softball fields, believed that it could make a difference in terms of playability. But also didn't want to put the district in a, in a tough financial position down the line. And so we had to go out and do some work and thanks to Rick and his family, um, we're going to be able to, uh, make this happen. So, um, appreciate Rick and his enthusiasm, also appreciate his family who was a part of the process. You know, that includes Megan and Rob Schilt. Rob worked for the district at one time. Dan Ruffinock and his wife, Crystal. Dan worked for the district at one time. And then Emily and Dustin Murray. And Emily, uh, obviously had a longstanding, very successful athletics career here as well. So the family couldn't have been more enthusiastic, more supportive of this idea. And to get to this point, to be able to say that we have the funds to install turf on both varsity fields is, is really truly exciting. And I'm just very thankful for the, the ongoing support from Rick and his family. And we're excited to see that, uh, get installed in the near future. Ron, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, I think I would just echo what Joe said for the most part. And, you know, we've had tremendous support from our community on all these sponsorships. And, uh, there is a lot of commitments for many years down the road, but for Rick to step up and say, all right, we know that in order for this turf to be done on these two fields, I'm willing to front the lifetime, uh, sponsorships right now. And so, uh, just a huge thank you to him for, for being willing to do that and, and the support for, for the district, uh, from him and his family.
It's a big deal. And, and so as we were saying, these will be lifetime sponsorships. It'll be the Rick Ruffinock Family Varsity Baseball Field and the Rick Ruffinock Family Varsity Softball Field. If anyone has either been by the, the campus or seen some of the drone, uh, footage, pictures that have been taken, that complex is coming along quickly and, and nicely. Um, and we're really excited about it. And it's important that I also say that in terms of maintenance, um, and replacement costs down the line, we have secured sponsorships that will support that work as well. And we're hoping to announce that maybe as soon as, at our next meeting, as long as everything falls into place. So again, kudos to the board. Think you played it right. We did this the right way for the right reasons. And as almost always, our, our community steps up and, and provides whatever it is we need to create a special, um, environment for our kids. But be happy to answer any questions at this point.
No questions, Joe, just, you know, gratitude to the Ruffinock family.
Agreed.
This is a big deal and we hope to get it done, but we have much scary concerns and they stepped in and solved that for us. So it's great.
Great people.
Yeah, I would echo that also. And I think, um, you know, the part that I'm seeing that I'm really excited about is just what it's going to bring to the whole community. You know, yeah, it's going to be a baseball field, but that being used over the summer, you know, spring, summer, fall, and the people that it's going to bring in is going to be tremendous. So thank you very much for that, Rick. Thank you.
Yeah, you're right. My bad investment will allow us to entertain, uh, events and tournaments that previously would not have been possible. And it's our hope that that will lead to some business in the community, right? And, and, um, I think this, this project as a whole is going to create some new, new opportunities that didn't exist and I'm excited to see that all happen.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Phil. Because at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the lifetime sponsorship of the varsity baseball and softball fields at the new Monroe High School as presented. Second by Mike Davis, second by Mike Frost. Any discussion before we take a vote? Just to echo, well, thank you to, to Joe and Ron for kind of sticking with us on, on the twists and turns here. And it does, it's not easy to, to kind of keep people with you when, when we're talking this much money, um, through, um, you know, kind of navigating the, the several weeks or months of this, uh, the course of this project. So thanks for all your diligence here and just a huge thank you to the Ruffinock family for, um, your incredible support of Monroe, um, our Monroe community. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. That one feels good to get, get across the finish line. Okay, next up, we've got, uh, an action item to approve the early graduation requests for Jessica Miguel Cruz as presented.
I'll turn it over to Jeremy, actually. He's closest to this.
Yeah, so I, I did it right up there because obviously there's some sensitive information. So hopefully you're able to read that. I'm not going to talk about it much here, but just in, in a nutshell, life happens sometimes and I think this would be in her, in her best interest for us to grant this request. And it seems like a very motivated young lady.
Maybe just in case folks haven't had a chance to check it out, give board members a chance to take a look at the quest letter. Any questions for Jeremy or administration before we? Awesome. Can I entertain a motion to approve the early graduation request as presented?
Second.
Motion by Nicole, second. Second by?
Steve or Terry.
Steve, second by Steve. Any discussion before we vote? Thank you, Jeremy, for, for bringing this and giving it the, the kind of attention it deserved to, um, also presented in the way that you did. Much appreciated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, we've got the approval of Start College Now requests.
Yeah, that's neat as well. It's pretty exciting actually that we have this many this year. Normally we have one or two, but to have students taking advantage of this opportunity to gain technical college credits while in high school is, is pretty amazing. So I would support all of these in doing this and I hope they're all successful.
Jeremy, I noticed on, on all of these that if, if unsuccessful with the coursework, that the, the student and the family are obligated to pay the cost. That's, that's very clear to them because I see some of these, it's like three or four classes, which is a lot, right?
So when the family or when they go in to talk with our school concerts, that's where this starts. They talk about that exclusively because it is part of our policy and practice as well as most school districts. That's how that happens. Just a bit of incentive to have some skin in the game to do well in those classes, right? I, I hope that's not a problem or an issue, but that has to be set up front.
I don't know if this is a techni- technicality we might need to just look at in the one regarding the, that terminology classes. In supporting recommendations you have listed, MHS does offer these courses. I'm assuming does not.
Does not.
Okay.
It was interesting, the wide array of interests and fields that these students are going into, which is great.
Wanted to teaching, it looks like, so that's good.
If there's no other questions, I guess I've got a question on the process. We have the, the motion language written for Diego Cardoza. Does that mean we need to approve each of these one by one? Or can we just?
I thought in the past, we've just made a motion to approve.
I think we can, we can approve them as a group.
I don't remember doing each one individually.
I think we can make him, as long as they're all, as long as he's, he's identified each, you know, all the specific courses and it's all recommended for me, Jeremy. I think we can prove all of them.
That's what we've done in the past. Okay, wait. Great. So I would entertain a motion to approve the Start College Now application requests as presented by Jeremy Jackson, MHS principal.
So moved.
Motion by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Nikki. Discussion before we vote? Appreciate it, Jeremy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, informational. MHS Building Project Update. Turn it over to administration.
Yeah, I'll just say quickly, um, I think we've really benefited from having some good weather that's allowed us to push forward. Cruz continued to do amazing work. I think every time we go out there, we're surprised to see how much detail than maybe something I would consider finished work or finished work is, is starting to happen with the millwork and the cabinetry. But they're making amazing progress both inside. Now, certainly as you look at the athletic fields, visually it's, it's stunning as far as the work that's getting done. But I'll turn it over to Ron to share his perspective.
Yeah, it's moving along really well at this point in time. Well, it's amazing how much does get done. And as Joe has said, the, the weather's been very beneficial, not only for us, but also for the city's work on 31st and 32nd and the development to the north of us as well, which will be Cheesemaker Drive coming into us. So, um, it's, it's been great for all those areas. Inside, um, HVAC and plumbing have, you know, are kind of wrapping up a lot of their areas. There's still a few areas where they're hanging some fixtures for plumbing and stuff, but most of the HVAC is in and connected and much of the plumbing is done. Electrical and low voltage wiring are probably the two biggest ones who are, you know, working throughout the building, uh, pretty actively still to this point. We're not at the point where there's some of the first coats of paint as well as ceiling grid going in in many spots. As Joe mentioned, there's, uh, cabinetry going in in some places and tile work. You know, we're not to the point of, you know, flooring and all the nice finishes and, you know, we, there's no, we're still waiting on a couple of stairwells and the elevators haven't been put in. So there's still a lot of work to come, uh, but it's starting to take shape inside. Performing Arts Center, uh, is starting to get and, and look like, uh, it's going to be as they've, uh, got the overhead work, uh, some of it, much of it done so that they're now starting to tier it up so that it looks more, uh, like it will, uh, in, inside. And then outside, uh, you know, what people can see as they're driving by, uh, the football field turf is down, uh, the, uh, the sand and the rubber have been put into it. So that kind of stands the turf up. So that's been done. The base court for the tennis courts has been paved. They'll do the overlay on that in the spring so that it's one less winter of wear on, on the actual tennis surface. They've been prepping the track to also be paved, uh, and so that'll likely be, get paved, uh, this fall. And again, that'll be the same case where, uh, they won't do the track overlay until the spring. So it's one less winter of wear on the track surface. And then the baseball and softball fields, uh, the foul poles are up, uh, they're working on the dugouts and, and, you know, a, a number of other issues or not issues, but another other facets out there. And so that complex is kind of, uh, the area where all the groundwork people have been concentrating on. Not to mention, uh, vaguely landscaping with, uh, there's been grass and plantings all over the site. So it's, uh, starting to take shape pretty well out there.
I think one thing that's been amazing, and we've said this to some folks on the tours, I think from the exterior, you look at some of the athletic complex and you say, wow, that's amazing. And then people sometimes might be led to believe that that's where the attention or focus was. But it feels like every single area of that building you go through, whether it be the academic wings, whether it be, uh, career and technical ed, whether you get into the performing arts, um, and to some of the fitness and PE areas, like, every, every area is incredible. Every area has something for a kid that hopefully we, makes them feel connected to their school experience. And so, um, we're excited to get, get people in there. And I can say the, the number of requests I'm getting as I'm out and about in the community asking, when can we get in there? And right now my response is, hang in there. We're get, we're getting to the home stretch and, and we'll definitely be scheduling some, some open houses when it's appropriate to have the community in there. But, uh, people are excited and they want to see what it looks like and, and we're eager to get folks in there soon.
Any questions for administration? Awesome. Appreciate the update. Keep us rolling. Onto the, uh, an action item, the approval of the public library tax exemption. I'm going to turn this, I'm guessing, over to Ron to bring us into context of the action item.
Yeah, this is a resolution we pass, uh, every year, basically, um, ourselves, we're, we're a bit of anomaly in, in the fact that we're a school district that oversees, um, a, a public library. And so then it, the taxing impact hits all the various municipalities and households that are within our school district. In the county, you also have, you know, Glarus has their own public library, Broadhead has their own public library. And, and in those communities, it's, uh, part of the, the city tax that covers that. But in all those cases, whether it's the city or whether it's us, uh, basically we have to show, or if we show, that our commitment from our, our taxpayers are more than what the, you know, tax burden for a public, uh, library is across the county. We get an exemption for, for our municipal, uh, taxpayers so that they're not getting double taxed at the county level. They're not getting taxed once by us and then also by the county. And so every year we, we have a worksheet we fill out that shows what our level of support is for our, our library and that it meets or exceeds, uh, what the public library's burden countywide is. And, and so that we get this exemption so that people who reside in the school district of Monroe aren't paying a separate levy for, for the library tax for the county.
Any questions for Ron before we move on this? With that, would, uh, thanks for clearing that up for us. Ron would entertain a motion to approve the public library tax exemption pending final tax levy approval as recommended by Ron Wilson, Business Administrator. Motion by Phil, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed nay, motion carries. Next up, we've got the superintendent profile focus group summary. And so I just want to name to the board, my apologies for kind of adding this late to our agenda so folks didn't get a chance to kind of read the write-up here. I'll talk it through because both is looking back and kind of summarizing the last five, six weeks of engagement, but also informing where we go next, or I guess in a few minutes as we go into closed session tonight. So first, just want to give a summary on the process. So over the past month, we've, the Board of Education has engaged multiple stakeholders in focus group conversations to build the profile needed in our next superintendent. We had around 100 attendees make it to five focus groups, providing a range of feedback and insights. So we had five meetings, business leaders, it was open to the community. Parents or families of the district also open to the community. Hosted a student focus group and then two staff focus groups, one for administration specifically and another that was kind of open to any, any staff member. So just wanted to call it specifically that the community was invited to two of these five sessions through kind of open invitation. Next, I want to just recap, and I guess this is also a product of our executive committee meeting last week. So just a big thanks to, to the executive committee for both leading the focus group sessions and taking your time to do that and prepare for it, but also meet last week to kind of pull together the big themes. So I'll give the six themes, then a couple other notable things that kind of came out of the meeting. So first, the number one thing that emerged is that folks are looking for a leader who wants to be here, has the desire to lead in and kind of be a part of Monroe. And that came out in a variety of different ways. Some people said they got to be born and raised here, you know, and never left. And some people said everything in between, right? Like could be somebody who has a connection here, who's already here, or just somebody who really wants to be here. I think the biggest thing people wanted to avoid is that we don't want somebody who's kind of just looking for a stepping stone in their career, who just wants to be a superintendent anywhere. They're looking for folks who are committed and excited about Monroe. Second, given the current context and environment, that someone who has credibility and is able to build trust is really critical. Heard this in a lot of different ways. You all might have seen the write-up in the paper, kind of referenced healing in the headline. But I think given what's ahead of us, this idea of being able to bring people together from various aspects of our community aligned to the district is really important. Third, this kind of summarizes versatility in communications. Communication and ability to communicate matters a ton, but we heard kind of this different, this range of how someone has to be able to communicate in the superintendency. They have to be able to connect with, with students and families from our, you know, kind of highest performance students to our most struggling students at times, and also be able to kind of lead and inspire staff and rally business leaders and community leaders. And then even, you know, a couple of call-outs to the complexities of Wisconsin state politics and how much state legislative decisions matter. We need somebody who can, you know, lobby at the Capitol, too. And so that versatility was something that really emerged. Fourth, transparency was a word that came out quite a bit. I want somebody who's, you know, we've heard this, kind of like, don't want to beat around the bush, but somebody who's going to tell it like it is, but is also willing to set kind of a bold vision and goals and can rally and inspire a range of stakeholders around those. And I also heard this specific call-out a couple of times who, people who are looking for a superintendent who aligns their time and actions to their values and to the goals that we have. Okay, two more. Second to last is cultural leadership and, you know, heard this in a few different focus groups, kind of the need, you need somebody who can do the external kind of community-facing work, but also the internal leadership, given the superintendent, you know, has a lot of direct reports, manages principles and a lot of key leadership positions within the district. So how they set the tone, I mean, what I heard in the, in the staff focus group is how, you know, what happens in the DAC rolls into our buildings, right? And so somebody who can really lead, lead the team to have the type of culture that we want is really critical. And then finally, this maybe more of an intangible thing, I guess, but we heard, we heard it named in different ways, but this kind of discipline and resilience, somebody who can face adversity in tough times while remaining optimistic, grounded in our, in our values and our vision and goals, is willing to solicit feedback and take responsibility when they make a mistake. So that's my attempt to summarize, I guess mostly I've read exactly what's on the paper for everybody, but I wanted to pause and give especially the exec committee a chance first. And maybe Teresa will look to you and give you the option if you want to add anything about the content here or the, or the process before we, before I add a couple of other themes.
No, I think you summarized it really well. I think that was, you know, specifically the themes that came out of the student group that I led, and I think, I think those are well said. I don't think I have anything to add.
A couple of other themes, just to note, two things. One, there's a lot of excitement around the current state of the district. I heard this personally in the focus groups I attended, heard it, saw it in the notes and heard it from other folks, too, that just how, how kind of different things feel. And folks didn't seem to be unclear that we are facing some real challenges fiscally. But still, there's like this kind of tone and tenor of optimism that felt important to note. And then second, though, you know, we asked about it in different ways with different levels of specificity across the focus groups. I would say we heard a range of feedback around the process, kind of that we, in part of our presentation, we laid out, you know, as a board, these are the options we heard from Osby for how we can select a superintendent. We can hire a firm, we can run, open it up, run a process internally from, you know, kind of our own staff running the process, or we can appoint. And we heard a range of kind of opinions on that, though I would say the majority, probably a vast majority, were against, though not everybody, were against a kind of paid search approach. And finally, the next step, so where we're going to go from here. So, you know, this is the first step in the process to, you know, build the profile and especially to engage our community, a broad range of stakeholders in what folks think we need in our next superintendent. And now the next step, as a board, we need to figure out what do we want to do? Which of the kind of processes are we going to pursue? And hopefully, folks will understand, given, you know, that that is very hard to have that conversation without veering into a kind of evaluation of current personnel, especially our current interim superintendent, that we're going to close to do that. But I'll pause here just to see, I know most board members, or at least everybody not in the exec committee, this is kind of your first time seeing it. So would, anything that anybody wants to add or any questions on this informational item?
Yeah, I don't have a question or anything. I think you summarized it very well. I just wanted to do a shout out to the community staff, everyone that participated in the focus groups. It was great to see 100-plus people do the show, and evidence from the community as well. It was great feedback. That's it, Phil. Thank you.
Good. Trying to give appropriate wait time here. Okay. Is there like an important baseball game or something happening? Okay. Move on to informational items. Boardsmanship, administration. Is there anything you want to share?
Yeah, I was just going to share with the board that I know we've had some discussions about the likelihood that the board is going to want to go to referendum in the spring. In anticipation of that, I want you to know that the administrative team has been working hard to look at data, both enrollment data, comparable analytics, looking at how our staffing looks to, or how it relates to other similar school districts, looking at opportunities to make reductions that would be appropriate, and then identifying areas that would be really very challenging, all in an effort to start to put together a reduction plan should it be necessary. So our admin team has another meeting tomorrow. We'll work on that. We're being very careful and cautious about how we do this work to not only be sensitive to the data, but most importantly, sensitive to the people that, that we serve, the kids and the staff. And so we're working through that, but it's our plan to be prepared to have a conversation with the board as soon as the next board meeting, if necessary. And we'll, we'll wait to get feedback from the board in terms of what you would like and when you would like it. But that process has started.
Thanks, Joe. And also on the admin side, I've got nothing on, the radio station reached out to ask for, for time for an interview. That's the only Board of Ed correspondence that I've gotten. Committee reports. Start down at the south. Nicole, what do you got?
We had the curriculum meeting right before this meeting and had a great presentation from Todd on how the evidence-based teaching and learning is going. Seems that we're really moving in the right direction.
Save the dates went out for EIE's fundraiser in December, so people should have gotten them in the mail. So remember that, and invitations will be coming out soon.
Nothing.
Just to echo what Nicole said, we had a great presentation from the leadership team on evidence-based teaching and learning. And we will continue to have our regular curriculum meetings, the first meeting of the month.
Thank you. To the north.
Not the committee thing, but just want to hats off to the admin, the staff, the students. Ending this week of homecoming, last week, I saw a lot, a lot of school spirit, a lot of pride by our students, a lot of fun had by our staff and our students, and everyone was very respectful. I think they, they were very safe and responsible. And it was just really exciting to see the whole community and all our schools come together. So thank you all for generating the excitement and, you know, all the way from the grade schools through, through high school.
I've got two, two quick points. One, I don't know a whole lot about dance competitions, but my, it's a great, great preface. My daughter and son get so excited to go see the dance team perform at every halftime. And like, I've been blown away. Like I've seen a lot of these over the years, and it's like, it is really, really impressive. So just a shout out to, to all the dancers and the folks who are out there, because it is the highlight of my kid's week by far. Just wanted, wanted to say that. And then second, just wanted to, for me personally, it feels, I think I'd be remiss not to name this as Indigenous Peoples' Day today in the state of Wisconsin and many states, though unfortunately not, not everywhere in our country. And I know we don't have a huge indigenous population in Monroe and within Monroe School District, but I think, just want to say for those who do identify in that way, who are in our district and our community, that we see you, we value you, we appreciate that you're here. And of course, native communities across the state and the country, it's, this feels like a very important, given how, where I've spent most of my, my life, an important day to recognize in the way that Wisconsin does. So just want to say happy Indigenous Peoples' Day today. Lastly, we've got five minutes for the press. I don't think they're here today. All right, so we're going to move into closed. So I'm going to read this out and then would entertain a motion, sorry. It is 8:03. At 8:03, I'd entertain a motion to move into closed session according to Wisconsin statute 19851C for the purpose of discussing the interim superintendent, superintendent search process.
So moved.
Motion. Motion by Nikki, second by Mike Davis. We need to call the roll.
I do. All right, so Nikki Austin, yes. Jim Curran.
Yes.
Mike Davis.
Yes.
Nicole Joseph. Teresa Keen. Steve Mayer.
Yes.
Terry Montgomery. Yes. Phil Vosper. We're in closed.
All right. See everybody?
Thanks, everybody.
I'll just hang here. By the way, if your kid...
Game on your screen.
I am going to. By the way, if your kids love a good dance...